Welcome to the City Council meeting for Monday, May 5th, 2025. Sorry for the delay. Please rise, but pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Amanda.
Mark Whitner.
Here.
Shannon Derby. Bill Leclerc.
Here.
Doug Grant.
Excuse me.
Tim Petrie.
Here.
Farnesha Willenham. Here. Gaddis-Ann Massey.
Here.
Adam Mahaski.
Here.
Darla Leclerc.
Here.
Okay, onto number four. Consideration of any council member request to participate in this meeting from a remote location. Tonight Darla is trying us via phone. We just need a motion and a second to vote to allow her to join us. Yes, Mark?
I'll make a motion to allow Darla Leclerc to join us.
Thank you.
Second, Mark.
Thank you, Adam. Any council discussion? Otherwise, we'll do a roll call votes. Amanda.
Tim Petrie.
Aye.
Farnesha Willenham.
Aye.
Gaddis-Ann Massey.
Aye.
Adam Mahaski.
Aye.
Mark Whitner.
Aye.
Shannon Derby.
Aye.
Bill Leclerc.
Aye.
Okay, thank you for that. Welcome, Darla. We also have Andrew, our city attorney, on the line with us. Uh, we don't have any public hearings tonight, so let's get number five. Onto number six, input from the public. If you wish to address the council, please step up to the podium on your left, state your name and address for record. Input from the public. See none. Uh, onto number seven, trans communications. Letters and public communications from citizens. Anyone have anything to share? Yes, Tim?
I've got one about, um, someone building, uh, maybe like a hunting stand and people along the river. And they thought it was in the city limits, but they asked how it was going on.
I think I saw that. Trying to get on a river view. Look across the river, you can see something over there, yeah?
Yes. It's, uh, we got Mr. Doggy's property that says tree state. That we go to.
Gotcha. Anything else?
I think we all got the communication from one gentleman concerned with the debris at the beach. From when we used to put snow at the beach that we no longer do, I could reach out to him and inform him that some of that debris is from the beach or from the snow and we used to put it there. I took pictures of that last year. Um, I know public works have changed that and we now put it at beach now, but no longer use the beach for that. Correct? Yep. I approve it. I don't know when they start improving operations. Why? Probably not.
Not till Memorial Day. But we are looking into a smaller river that we can use, like a little monorail style river that we can use in the areas we can't get to with the big rivers. So hopefully we can dub some of the small stuff coming soon. Does that take the stones off too? Yeah. The big, the big river does too, but... He's also concerned about the sand dunes getting too tall. Uh, are we, are we gonna let them get taller or just let them go on their own? I don't honestly know what sand dunes he's talking about because there's no sand dunes on the show page proper. Uh, if they're down the beach and along the road, there are sand dunes there and I can't control the city.
Aren't we looking to do some kind of erosion control where there used to be, um, a lot more?
Actually, that's on the shoreline restoration stuff. I'll say it.
Okay.
I just did plant grass since I was, uh, street there, so it means like grass. Yeah, it's been before I was here that anybody would have planted a few grass there.
Junington officially did the plugs, the grass.
Anyone else? We did get an email from a citizen three minutes ago and I just didn't respond back to her. She was just wondering what's going on with the audio system and stuff. So I just, I haven't responded back to her. So you guys, if anything, just worry about it. I'm one of the fastest response on record. Um, onto number eight, council reports from boards, commissions, and committees. Mark?
I have a couple. First, uh, tomorrow morning at nine o'clock at Washington Park, there's gonna be a cleanup, uh, sponsored by Parkland Recreation in local rural town. They'll have hikers and kayaks, tiny, big, big boots, uh, jeans and a pair of gloves. People want to try this tomorrow, nine o'clock at Washington Park, work on the park. Also, I just wanna show everybody the selection committee, the city manager is moving on. Next week, we'll be on Thursday the eighth, uh, at three o'clock in the council center. We will be reviewing some of the candidate resumes to determine who we're gonna select for the next step in the activity and selection process. We also had a committee meeting this morning, a special BS blog. I don't know if you wanna say anything about that beautiful, uh, therapy blog. A lot of people behind it, guests here tonight, teaching the youth they help. Therapy situations, she's a very personally very friendly and she's training her on a regular basis. So you're doing a good job. Thank you for your, so.
Okay. Mark, anyone else?
I was gonna say, do you want to begin? Um, one.
Keep going.
Okay, okay. Recycling, electronics recycling is coming up June 10th at the waterway building.
Someone's... Keep going.
Uh, dummy PPIs, we'll be sending out some surveys, um, to our customers and then for the first time ever, we've had satellite detection, detection for our waterways in Two Rivers. And they have none.
Sorry, keep going. Sorry.
So, um, that was kind of the year of out and then landfill collection system is up and operating.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else? Okay. Uh... Yep, yep, go ahead, Darla.
Okay, I was gonna say from May 3rd, there's really nothing new to report. Um, but Shannon, could you give a report on EAP, please?
On EAP, I wasn't at the last meeting, Darla?
She wasn't there.
I was at the last one, at the last, uh, there was a bundle.
No things, nothing much has changed from the one before. So unless Matt, if you, if you have something that you wanna say.
No changes. Yep, no changes, Darla.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Okay. Anyone else? See nothing else, we'll go to the acting city manager's report.
All right. Right, I'm early in classes today, so I can leave the wall. All right, city manager's report. The first picture obviously is our, our sketchy outside with Domashlitsa. Um, and we'll talk about that in a little bit. But the ongoing recruitment and selection processes, obviously the city planner, community development director is ongoing for accepting applications. Um, I had mentioned at some of our last meetings, we are currently now looking for a new administrative professional, um, also our evidence custodian. We just posted that today. And the coming third, uh, we're reviewing applications for that position. In addition, as Mr. Whitner had mentioned, city manager recruitment, that position profile on video, uh, was posted. The application deadline was April 28th, 2025, with the next meeting Thursday, May 3rd. Uh, recruitment for seasonal positions are ongoing with Parks and Recreation. Many summer seasonal openings, as you can see, concession stand coordinator, cashier, recreational program support, scorekeepers on fires, light yards, swim instructors, park host, park, park managers. So now some, some history again. Um, on May 5th in Two Rivers, United States and Czech flags flew side by side for liberation day in Domashlitsa. Uh, eighty years ago, an advance unit from General Defense Third Army rolled into the town. The German occupiers fled or overtaken this prison. Lieutenant Colonel Matt Connaught of Two Rivers led that advance party and liberated his ancestral hometown from Nazi occupation. Townspeople proclaimed, "We are liberated by mongrel law." Our sister city's representatives were both honored to arrive on Sunday in a cappella of liberty in Vilson. A procession that included over four hundred vintage World War II era vehicles, was hundreds of men and women in uniform and in period civilian dress. The parade started in the outskirts of its major city in the lesser portion of the Czech Republic and ended in the heart of the historic downtown. For Two Rivers, one Lieutenant Colonel Matt Connaught had announced four loud speakers. In May of 1945, the war was over and the Nazis were defeated. Noble guests for the event included ninety-nine-year-old Harry Kumisen of, uh, the only World War II veteran of the May 1945 campaign in attendance, and George Patton Waters, the grandson of General George Patton. The number of American flags lined parade route and respect and enthusiasm shown for America at this event were hard to describe, but for what our nation has meant and still means to the world. That person, Mr. Greg Buckley. As you can see, a medallion there that did take up his Facebook post, uh, that these are the images of beautiful bronze medallion presented to Mayor Stansilov Otos in the town of Domashlitsa, Czech Republic by visiting representatives of Two Rivers on May 2nd, 2025. The medallion is the work of Wisconsin artist Patrick Burke of Manitowoc and Brandon Gauthier of Two Rivers. The gift was funded entirely through generous donations from the community. Some more pictures. From what I heard, they had fabulous weather while we were freezing here in Two Rivers up until today. We're generally switched and now we got some sunny weather and you're dealing with community in the north. Yes, the next, uh, long-term work of the memorial week will be next week. Uh, that will start off, I believe, on May 9th with, um, a few of our honor gear going down to the state capitol where, um, state level, they'll be basically doing, um, honor for all our fallen officers in the state of Wisconsin. I kind of like it too much, as you see in Washington DC for, for that day. It's a great honor that we're always involved with. Uh, on accounting level, after our ceremonies, we go over to the Manitowoc County Courthouse where we will recognize, I believe it's at two thirty, uh, all the fallen officers in Manitowoc County, of which we all had fallen officers in one fashion or another. And then locally, we go to our memorial bridge and have a ceremony where we recognize our two fallen officers, Rock and Dodge. Uh, we'll have banners on the bridge for that event. Prior to that, on even more local level, we go to all the, the elementary schools and we give the history of our fallen officers and what that means. Next, I'll invite, uh, Phil Metzen up to sort of do a few things from tourism standpoint.
So this week is National Travel and Tourism Week. Uh, so we're celebrating that with a number of things across the community. On Thursday night, we've got a presentation. Uh, that representative from Carol Wisconsin, who's currently their key speaker. Uh, you guys should get a glance at that and make some responses to that. Looking forward to that. I'm ready to quit that. Uh, summer is right around the corner. So we're rolling a bunch of brand new tourers swag. So sporting monstrosities tonight. Uh, you can get these items downstairs at Front West City Hall, the trailers at, uh, Wildflower Outdoors and then through its main streets. And I think, uh, Bill the janitor also was carrying some of the, the bags. Excuse me. Uh, so, uh, we're coming with proclamation later in the, uh, meeting. It's been a hot sweatshirt, by the way.
Yeah. Lots of stuff up there.
Next, we might, um, close everything in the park's name line. Good evening, everyone. On April 26th, we got to celebrate this Arbor Day over at the Leicester Public Library. Uh, this event was thanks to a Wisconsin DNR forestry grant and funded a few different types of things. But it helps for the cost of removal of ash trees that are in the libraries, uh, were in the library's parking lots and then replanting five new trees there as well. Uh, Terry Yell from the Library Health Program and, uh, do some fun activities for kids. Forty-one people show up for it and it's a blast. Uh, making smores, doing sidewalk chalk, or any of that old ash core and helping plant the trees. Uh, they clearly got hurt in that process as well because there were some shovels and rigs flying around for a little bit, but they had it blasted. So, uh, thank you to the library for hosting us and doing such a great job. Uh, very proud of my marks crew, Jared, Scott, Kidman, and Corey Johnson all came out on Saturday and helped out. Cut down a tree, isn't that all? The kids love that. Uh, they brought the trees, they brought the dirt. They were super all prepared and, uh, just stood next to the Johnsons. All around, so we're happy with that, that one. The picture on the, on the bottom right, that was kind of cool. The guys had cut down the tree, we carried over a log and you can see how the emerald ash core larva had eaten away uh, inside the tree. And we actually found an emerald ash core larva. Kind of hand on, hands on science. Um, kind of notification for people throughout the city in some ways. Um, we are planting trees and scattered throughout Two Rivers, mostly on the east side, on the far side of the East River as replacements for trees, for trees that they have taken, taken out the last two years. So we have been trying to remove all the ash trees we can and then there's been some very poor condition maple trees and other street trees. And so with our, uh, environmental fund that we have with the city, we've been replacing those trees. Correct landscaping should be reading those scattered sites. Uh, probably this week, kick those into the ground. Uh, people that are affected by that, hopefully, uh, have flyers put on their door, uh, as we work out the planting locations. The next big planting push will take place on May 14th. That'll be sixty trees funded, uh, for grand, uh, Lake Michigan Burn Observatory is the organization that helps do that grant. So it'll be six trees along Roosevelt Street. That's one we pretty did last year. Uh, some of the side streets off Roosevelt as well. So, uh, those, that whole street will hit canvas with the flyers uh, on their doors if you're up to that. Next one. Uh, we're excited about this, uh, program coming out. So we wanted to rag it out a little bit. Uh, um, last weekend, May, June 1st, we're, uh, we are having an adaptive kayak workshop at the Two Rivers High School. Uh, very appreciative of Two Rivers High School helping us. Uh, host this event, cool, even though school's going on. We're gonna have a classroom space as well. Uh, we have seven participants signed up. They participate as, uh, instructors in training. So they'll learn how to adapt kayaks for people with physical disabilities. Then there'll be three students that will come in, uh, individuals that actually have physical disabilities and then they will get to work with those instructors alongside them in adapting kayaks. Uh, fun fact, we're proud of this little economic boost from the program and that we've had nine hotel stays scheduled for the program as well. So, uh, Joe likes to put that part in the middle a little bit. Uh, next one. Uh, and the last one, we got good news recently through a partnership, the Flash National Resources Partnership, that they received a five thousand dollar grant from Wisconsin DNR's Service Water Program. Uh, this grant will fund a thousand dollars for our cattle blusa event, just in event supplies for the cattle blusa event, that's September 13th. They'll fund a thousand dollars for the kayak rentals for that event for throughout the summer, however we choose to use them. I think it was around fifteen hundred dollars for cattle's park for native landings. We had a, uh, site maintenance meeting for cattle's park last year and so this will start the, the planting restoration of the shoreline when they're about as well. So great partnership that they, uh, we've, they stepped up and promoted grant for us and we're gonna work together on it. So those are about all I have to say.
Yes, thanks, Michael.
And this is about Dave's stories. So the first one is the Memorial Drive, uh, Big Time Highway Boarding New Project. Um, I've been attending the legally progress meetings on the day mornings. Uh, the progress has been moving along, so they go surely. Uh, they are still working on the original concrete road, replacing, uh, base patches there. Last week, they did the concrete overlaying on the Washington City Bridge. Uh, both the North Offense and South Offense were completed. Uh, it's now clearing out. Uh, one of the construction is picking up their excess sand and move for a lot today. Uh, the bridge will remain closed for the duration of the week as some manholes in the twelfth and, uh, Washington Memorial Drive intersection get raised up to be available to accept the asphalt overlay that is coming, uh, later in June. Starting next week, uh, most likely Wednesday, uh, kind of dimly. They are looking at putting a skin coat of asphalt from Manitowoc up to Two Rivers. Uh, hopefully all of that will be completed before beginning of Monday weekend when the official through traffic detour will be suspended and traffic will then again be allowed to flow freely between, uh, Manitowoc and Two Rivers or Two Rivers to Manitowoc, or trafficway you wanna go. Uh, but it will be reduced to a single lane as they will be doing their whole payback, uh, fitness payback, uh, from where they began until the end of June with restoration fees are being followed. So project is moving toward, uh, it's a little bit of a headache, but, uh, it'll be nice when it's all set and up. And lastly, uh, good, mantles all the same. From last week, Wednesday, or service, uh, service laterals, uh, from beginning of year to present, roughly seventy-five public side water services have been, uh, installed or replaced. There's been about fifty public sanitary, sort of, uh, laterals replaced within the roadways. Uh, about twenty-one private water services and nine, uh, private sanitary services. So still have a long way to go, uh, to hit that goal of three hundred, uh, water services. So we're getting there and contractors moving along. And what kept us at that is we are still trying to get them to replace the concrete patches that they pulled out. Uh, and this is the subcontractor there. So I'm guessing, let me finish up on forty-two. They'll be jumping off to the north side and replace those, uh, panels of concrete up there. All right, we've got the rest of logistics in the desk. They, uh, tomorrow will have a, a groundbreaking ceremony in the United Industrial Road. Upcoming opportunities is, we have Kurt mentioned from both, uh, three, four council members, pro-rata vote, community service opportunity wash for a clean home tomorrow, nine o'clock till ten. Country look out, uh, we did a successful one again at Senior Center. Um, and Starbucks has asked for, uh, a reschedule Wednesday, May 14th. Uh, the last one they had delayed because of draft, um, concerns. Two Rivers School District Workshop, uh, May 19th at Leicester Library with three full weeks to explore. Plenty of time to enjoy hundreds of amazing student programs. Our program already underway, um, this last week, but continuing dates, May 8th, 9th, and 10th. It's like an SNL, those skits and local comedy. Um, heard nothing but great things from a lot of people promoting this event. Um, performances, the live nights, about three hundred each night, a very popular night event in the live auction, featuring a painted toilet seat sent by a cast of crew reaper who has the best seat in the house. Uh, highly sought after prizes are bid upon for display and whole more business has been sold for as much as three thousand. Quite an amazing fundraiser that we need to house here in Two Rivers. Doors open at six PM. Auction for best seat in the house starts at six forty. Performances begin at seven. Food and drinks available for purchase. Uh, you can purchase those tickets online. Uh, they're also available for twenty dollars at Tees's, which is waiting Two Rivers and Manitowoc. Paper shredding and electronics recycling, uh, by the Two Rivers Optimist Book and the Two Rivers High School Practice Info. Uh, nine o'clock to one PM at Community House, uh, upcoming. You can dispose of your sensitive items, bring them to five grocery bags worth of paper for free shedding. Uh, most electronic items are free, though there is a charge for funneling head-ons, refrigerators, things containing free on TVs as May 17th, 2025. Snow Fest Lion and Beer Walk, always a great event for people walking with lion and beer. Saturday, May 17th, 2025, five AM to eight thirty downtown Two Rivers. Uh, as you can see, you can get your tickets there. And I thought it'd be important, there's a lot of questions, uh, early in the year already. Uh, so there will be a UAS recycling event Tuesday, June 10th, 2025. We'll bring up reminders of that. That'll be seven thirty to five PM in Two Rivers Utilities. So look for more information on that upcoming. And that would be the end, but being a police officer and a trained observer, I still have a dirty lips when I skip over some of the guys. Uh, so first, we'll call up, uh, Two Rivers Fire Department, Youth Apprentice, Christopher Parker, and Chief David Rapp.
Good evening. And as I spoke in the last council meeting, I discussed our new youth apprentice programs. The first time that city of Two Rivers has had a youth apprentice and I discussed how we had interns before. Which is a very successful program for us. The youth apprentice is a much different program than the intern. For the intern, it's a more observational role where the apprentice is more, it's more of a segue into full-time employment as opposed to firefighter program. I think it's, it's a great community outreach program for the city of Two Rivers and for the students at high school. It's an excellent opportunity for them that they want to explore their careers in firefighter program. And, um, I think it's having local students go through this program and possibly hire them full-time in the city. I think it's great for the city, uh, through the local people that want to invest in and trust in the department, all the departments here. I'm not saying there's candidates from outside or candidates for us, but, um, truly we'd like to have this program be some locally goes through both of those schools and then come back and work for us. Uh, but the first could not be here last week, so I'm gonna introduce him to you. Uh, in March, we did a very competitive process, which was one, I believe, eight candidates that made it down to the interview assessment center process. Uh, he did his role as also the operative position in, in April. Uh, he started approximately two or three weeks ago. Yeah, so he started about two weeks ago, uh, that last Monday that I mentioned. Um, it's, it's a great program. He's learning a lot. He's embedded with the shift during the week, so he works four days a week. And what he's doing is he's working with the shift. He has one receptor or a mentor that works with him, uh, but he's embedded with all three shifts. So what does he do? So he, he's what is what they got is he watches animals and puts them down. He restores the animals, does animals in the tours. Uh, he trains with the guys. His is his uniform. His is also a turn-up gear and he honors and supports to go through fire school and through fireman school. So I think it's a fascinating entity, you know, that we keep this rolling for many years to come. I think, uh, eventually, uh, we had the funding for it that we can do two of each year. Uh, like I said, it's a, a program for the city and it really, the fire department and our public safety is giving back to the community with their time. Not during emergencies, these are future firefighters. And you're gonna see complete turnover of this fire department in a number of years because of long retirements. So we need to foster that, that, you know, to get these, these students up here as well. Because I'm not like children. So we need to foster that, that feeling to get these, these students up here as well, because I'm not a children. So, so for the group, this is Christopher Barker, he's our apprentice.
So next we have representatives from the American Legion of Auxiliary, make one six five proclamation designated May as Poppy Month and May twenty-third, twenty twenty-five as Poppy Day in the City of Two Rivers.
As Tracy ends up, who will be in motion to re-adopt proclamation?
I think I'll be here. Thank you, Shannon, section five. Thank you, developing council discussions. So now this will be your role, come on, come on, come on.
Ted Peter, you have a question.
Hi.
Hi.
Carla Claire.
Hi.
Mark Brenner.
Hi.
Shannon Derby.
Hi.
Billis Claire.
Hi.
The floor is here.
Poppy Month Resolution. Whereas America is the land of freedom, preserved and protected willingly and freely by citizen soldiers. And that millions who have answered the call to arms have died of ill care. Whereas a nation at peace must be reminded of the price of war and the debt of those who have died in war to bring us peace. Whereas the red copy has been designated as a symbol of sacrifice of lives in all wars since nineteen nineteen. And whereas the American Legion Auxiliary has pledged to remind America annually of this debt through the distribution of the memorial flower in May. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Two Rivers, in recognition of this event, do hereby replace the month of May twenty twenty-five as Poppy Month and May twenty-third, twenty twenty-five as Poppy Day, and as does the rest of the nation. And we happen to have some poppies here. And y'all can. You'll be actually, uh, who will be doing this as your, as the contractor, always going to be done, or will be done?
She gave me change.
We are going to be.
Okay. Catch that.
Financial, medical, and other support programs. Our specific unit has given money to, um, creative arts festival and some local veterans. Fire, I think. All right, um, the, the American Legion, as well as the American Legion Auxiliary, was chartered by Congress twenty nineteen. And as we felt, we prefer everything to be on an annual basis, we were chartered. So thank you.
Thank you. And finally, for, uh, legislative and easier government, I thought it'd just be nice to acknowledge that we had a very successful listening session. I was up here and I think I counted a total of fifty-seven people up here. It's actually a state representative, Paul Hill, and state senator, uh, from A U for the listening session. I thought that was great. Speaking with them, they had four that day, uh, the first of which was only able to six people in Calgary. Uh, followed by Clement, Wisconsin, and Derek Scholz, Shouigan. We were right up there with the team, so I thought that was great. That's all I have to say.
Awesome, thank you, Ben. Uh, I'm to the ten consent agenda, on our date, we have minutes of meeting. Uh, we have an order for his board for April eighth, twenty twenty-five, environmental five reports from April sixteenth, twenty twenty-five. Zoning Board of Appeals, April seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. Business and Industrial Development Committee and Community Development Authority from April twenty-second, twenty twenty-five. And Architectural Control, maybe August seventh, twenty twenty-five. Recommended action, we motion to receive and file. Under B, we have financial reports, um, for April, uh, twenty twenty-five. We have debt service, general fund, Western Library, and utilities report. Recommended action, we motion to receive and file. Under C, uh, applications and petitions, we have one for a temporary class B license. Two Rivers Fish Derby Incorporated, Incorporated, Foundation of Kiwanis Club of Two Rivers, Two Rivers Fish Derby and Festival from July nineteenth through twentieth, twenty twenty-five, at Falls Field, on Canada and Minnesota. Recommended action, we motion to approve the application and have the issuance of the license. Uh, recommended action for the consent agenda will be a motion to approve the consent agenda with various actions recommended. Do I have that set motion?
For example, we should approve the, 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 the.
Thank you, Bonnie, second to five. Thank you, Bill, any council discussion? Yes, Mark.
Mr. President, anybody who was listening in West Council area, just reflected on inspection report. Number, it's almost involved, um, actually, this year compared to last year's numbers. I think I backed up city council, corrected inspection report that we had all inspection from last year. And we had a few of the, the issue, that's why the number is wrong. And we corrected the report, most of our inspection reports are actually at last year, so that's a positive.
Hey, Mark, anyone else? See, now they'll do a voice vote, on favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? On to city council formal items, uh, under A, we have a word of bid for twenty twenty-five collateral replacement program. Several locations on the city's east side.
I'd be helped by, uh, so I apologize. Um, on April twenty-fourth, uh, we did, uh, proceed for a bid and opened them, uh, for most part, they were pretty competitive, just the, uh, bottom three, the, uh, the red contractor for about three hundred thousand dollars, more than the number two contractor. That being essential sewer water. Um, there is, or have done some concern voiced regarding, uh, this contractor being banned from the City of Shouigan, uh, that is partially true in that, uh, apparently the Shouigan Water Utility uh, had some issues with their work, uh, they call the City of Shouigan. And they are still using them as a contractor for sewer, because that's very exonerating sewer work. Uh, presently, they are working on a DOT contract and a, uh, million-plus dollar contract in the village of Shorewood in Milwaukee suburbs. Uh, my uncle then talked to other past communities or developers that have used them for the past three years. And overwhelmingly, the consensus was, uh, they are a good contractor. If issues arose, uh, they were addressed immediately, uh, so on and so forth. So, uh, long story short, I still stand by the recommendation that I had written for tonight's meeting in that, uh, award of the contract uh, for the twenty twenty-five scattered, east side scattered lateral, uh, replacement contract awarded to the special sewer water, uh, at the bid amount of one million eight hundred sixty-seven thousand five hundred eighty dollars.
Any questions for Matt?
I, um, so they're thinking not just the side, uh, I know this is, um, topsoil restoration and all that. So are they just thinking not at, um, can't think what it's called, it's between the side font and here, here's what I'm wondering, do you put linings in these, um,
I have three laterals.
For the sanitary sewers on a, on a regular basis or something? Because it seems, in my ignorance, I, I always would think that replacing the pipe itself would be better. I mean, if you're thinking of.
Changing up the two contracts.
I, I.
So this contract is dealing similar to what we're doing up on the near north side, replacing the water services.
Okay.
Uh, basically getting the lead and the ionized water services out of the ground. And then as we're there, we're replacing the sanitary laterals, give them to those proximity. So this contract is.
Or I'm trying to get stuff with two different things.
Yeah, the next contract, uh, is dealing with the linings. But occasionally, uh, contractors will pipe first, a lateral. Uh, and so they don't have to dig up as much of the terrace. Same thing with the water service, they will try and climb onto the existing water service and pull it through. So again, they're not excavating of the whole entire yard.
I, I, I speak that I.
I'm wrapping, you know, I'm a little bit, address here concerns, a few minutes. Mark.
Uh, man, to talk to the original engineer in the last estimate, it was two, three, two, three.
Yep.
And the actual fifteen and a one, that's a pretty substantial differential. Are you concerned about anything at all? It's great to save that much money to the committee, that's a big number.
And if we take a look at the, uh, common country memo, you can see that all the, uh, bids were pretty much in line with, uh, just under that two, three, two point three million dollars. So we got very favorable, uh, bids and, uh, again, similar to, uh, the last contract that was awarded. Uh, it depends on how hungry the contractors are. So how many, uh, services is this kind of covered in the month twenty-eight? Uh, about two hundred properties, so do you have an exact number, it's about two hundred? We've got it for two hundred. Okay, um, so because the prices are favorable, we might be, uh, two fifteen, two thirty, uh, but in all of that, uh, you can't, uh, probably, that's been picked all year. So, uh, they're looking at a late summer start and it'll blend into, I think, up till June of next year. Right now, they're looking at finishing up their Shorewood and the DOT project and then we can prove that, uh, later this one. Did you see it directly with your way to utilities? I did not, I would not, uh, do, might not know the actual, uh, concern for their. I would like to hear from them before I go. Probably, because, just because we went through this with the assessor too that, that had problems, we went with them anyway. And we had problems. And I'd like to see, have to know what their problem was and what we could possibly be getting into. The, uh, concern of that is, uh, before they did, they had to do what's known as a, uh, pre qualification. And basically showing us that they are financially, uh, capable, they have similar type, uh, work experience in the past. Thus the reason, uh, we're able to open their bid is because they have shown to us that they are capable of doing this work both physically and monetarily, have our back, backing equipment, uh, to do this type of work. So that then makes them responsible, uh, and their bid is not low. So unless something significant would come out of, uh, Shouigan Water Utility, I don't see how we can not, um, award this. You can only deny the bid here. We could deny the bid and rebid, uh, but I would guarantee you that our costs would be increased.
I would bluster in for the two hundred people if something happens. Plus, we obviously cause for concern, plus the other Shouigan utilities are confusing.
The other caveat to that is, uh, we need to execute contracts in the month of May. And if we execute contracts now, it is our, so we can reach another portion of this by, uh, by end of June. So it takes us to rebid ultimately, uh, all four weeks. Are the time of the first notice goes out to the kind of actual opening. So I, I don't disagree, but. So I don't disagree, there's some concerns there, um, and I after these concerns were, um, brought back to life, uh, through one of our council individuals, uh, I could reach out again to, uh, these other municipalities and, uh, see if they had any significant concerns. The most significant concern was putting together of a request and, uh, final documentation. My understanding through the news articles, um, is that there was an issue through, they did to, uh, for Shouigan, uh, related to not flushing out the water services prior to, uh, putting the service in, in the live hole, so to speak. So, uh, my understanding is that our facility does that, um, to ensure that it's clean. Our customers are receiving that clean water. So.
Oh, you don't think you can do some.
Mush the table, we did. Get it two weeks and find that information though for sure, so we know what we're exactly getting ourselves into.
They did water services like three years ago, or two years ago. We find twenty-one and we're going to, were there any other complaints besides mine?
And talking to Scott Hall, uh, he is not remembering any significant.
I just wondered if I know that, because you wouldn't know what is supposed to be done, how, so, and most people do when they're not home. There are those things, people just find it difficult, have to take the work, but.
Did you have complaints?
But, yeah.
Okay. So it was, uh.
Go ahead, Darla.
Okay, well, one of my questions was, have you talked to other municipalities? My other question is, um, have we ever used essential sewer water before?
Yes, back in, uh, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. They did, uh, the same type of contract, except that it was barely scattered throughout the entire city.
Okay, and you did talk to other municipalities?
I talked to four other municipalities. I tried reaching out to Shouigan Water Utility and I talked to one well. And the only one I did not.
Everybody.
I did not hear back from Shouigan Water Utility.
Good, but everybody seemed comfortable with them?
Well, I'm sure everybody except, uh, the Shouigan Water Utility, but I don't know the reason why.
Okay, so we can either award it, or Adam said we could table it until, for two weeks.
I'll just, I'll make a motion either which way.
I think I, I also have more questions, sorry.
I don't have a question, I just wanted to clarify exactly what.
Yeah, we will, I, I must mark as a question.
The other utility you talked to, did they have with the after Shouigan or was it prior to?
Concurrently.
So we had.
It was work at the same time, so, uh, one of those two years ago. It was work at the same time, so, uh, one was two years ago, one of, uh, or two were last year. I don't remember what I heard about those.
And they weren't capable of running.
They didn't have a problem, you had to take care of the problem.
I was there to make sure that they put it and backed up. And then work went forward, I said, like, oh, yeah, shit, that's all it's supposed to be. You know, it's, a lot of that.
So back to Adam, you were gonna say something? I will make a, a motion to table till next meeting, uh, to get further information from Sheboygan Utility, uh, for any issues that they had. Okay, we have a second. Adam made a motion to, to table it, just your word, fine, two weeks.
Okay, then.
Thank you, Darla. Uh, then we'll do a roll call vote, Amanda.
Um, Bill and Claire.
Aye.
Ted Petrie.
Aye.
Bonnie Schumulus.
No.
Scott Stuckmuster.
Aye.
Adam Husky.
Aye.
Darla Leclerc.
Aye.
Mark Bittner.
I, if we have enough time, it, the other funding to support this project, that comes up, I guess. I'll see if it's good idea, get more information, but, well, there's certain, uh, finding, achieving additional.
Are they supposed to be until a year from now, so? Time is the most. The, the signing issue is we have to get the executed contract down to the I R in June. Uh, table it for two weeks, we should not have an issue.
And giving additional information. Not so bad.
Um, and Shannon.
Okay, thank you for that, uh, and to be awarded a bid for twenty twenty five sanitary sewer binding project.
So this one's, uh, considerably less controversial, I hope, uh, we received one bid on the same day, uh, to do sanitary sewer lining, uh, throughout the city, and that was from a ditch sewer in L L C, Milwaukee, Wisconsin. And they had said about seven hundred seventy four thousand seven hundred twenty six dollars. Again, my recommendation is to award, uh, to ditch sewer. Uh, to preemptively, uh, address Bonnie's, uh, concern is, uh, actually, lining is a more cost-effective method, uh, prolonging the life of a sanitary sewer. With the only caveat being where the private laterals come in, uh, depending on how it is done, you potentially have a weak, uh, point or link in the process there. Uh, if we paid additional dollars, we could also line from the new, from the sanitary main up into the laterals, making that stronger point of connection. Uh, you can also dig down at these points of connection and put in a new, uh, T or Y. Uh, and that is usually done, a lot of times in a reconstructive project. This is just maintaining the life of our sanitary main. So you, uh, take a camera, go in to see if the, whether there's not a lot of rips and stuff on the way, if they, uh, is plausible to do the job. So very. Yep, and that's actually done, uh, prior to bidding, um, so a camera was pushed down the sewer main. It records everything, uh, determines where the tiles are coming into the main, the condition of the main. And then ultimately, uh, whether the pipe is, uh, clean or not, lightable. And that's what the contractor then uses to, uh, provide a cost. So how much, like, are we getting down to seven hundred thousand? Don't remember off the top of my head.
Uh.
Two thousand, yeah. Yep.
Yeah, that's gonna be just as rough, we're gonna have to tear out the strings, I think. But it doesn't address the laterals, it's just the main line.
And, uh, doing a reconstructive, just the main would not address the laterals either. Unless we align the laterals, which we're not proposing to do. And if we did an open cut, you would then have to do all the damage restoration. So double the cost of aligning contract to restore, uh, payment if we might hold it up. So definitely a more cost-effective, uh, method of prolonging the life of our sewer. Basically, we will get another fifty to seventy five years of life on these sewers.
But it's really complicated, because they have cuts in the main laterals to address the laterals, is it? Is it painted?
They, they basically take a order board and actually cut out where the, the lateral comes in. And, uh, we save the full part of the private lateral into the main.
Any other questions for Matt?
We got quite a bit of this already.
Yes. The other question, then, we're looking for a motion.
Just a motion, though. That's not them.
Okay, yes, second, Bill, any council discussion? Darla, any questions, there are discussion?
No, I don't think.
Okay, then we're looking for a roll call vote, Amanda.
Tim Petrie.
Aye.
Bonnie Schumulus.
Aye.
Scott Stuckmuster.
Aye.
Adam Husky.
Aye.
Darla Leclerc.
Aye.
Mark Bittner.
Aye.
Shannon Durbin.
Aye.
Bill Leclerc.
Aye.
Thank you for that, thank you, Matt. Uh, I'm just seeing ordinance of amendment chapter six, dash thirteen on municipal code, mental licensing of short-term rentals. Oh, yours is better.
I know we have Andrew, Andrew, who's got it, uh, voting for that, so he's here to answer any questions regarding that. You guys should have, uh, what should be a red line copy, but it's purple, I think, um, with also some dark green as far as additions and suggestions. But Andrew would have the red, red line copy, it's just a fold.
Uh, I don't see the red line in the, in the package.
Okay.
I made a, so I've got them here.
Okay.
Yeah, that's me at a little bridge where transferring it over took away the red line. So if you could use the one issue, you have maybe copies for all the council.
Okay. Um, so i- if you've got any questions, we, we can go there, I mean, uh, the ordinance as it is before you is not particularly, uh, not specifically different from, from the last time, uh, we looked at it, um, but it, but you've got it in, um, in the chapter as it would appear, um, so if you were to look at the, at the chapter, you've got, uh, there in six thirteen, that had a definition for maximum capacity. Uh, six, six thirteen one, rather, uh, and then the next change is gonna be down on, uh, I think, three here, uh, uh, six thirteen dash, uh, section four, uh, subsection C, down at the bottom. So that's giving the, the city, uh, that, that, uh, power to, to after license, that it keeps away from just coming back and getting it right away, uh, in the next year. Uh, in the next section, six thirteen five, uh, there are a few more changes, uh, under subsection A eight. We get into the things that need to be displayed, um, by the short-term rentals, so, uh, adding the current license, adding the length ordinance, um, adding the maximum capacity, and then requiring that there be contact information for all, uh, the police department, non- emergency line, fire department, property owner, and property manager. Um, nine, adding the requirement that, uh, the most recent rental be reported so that the city can check and compare, uh, rentals, uh, by orders compared to the amounts that the city's receiving from, uh, online marketplaces, uh, as a way to sort of make sure that the city's receiving, uh, uh, room tax and maintenance. Uh, and then down at the bottom of, of that section, B, uh, that's the lighting, uh, ordinance, uh, addition here. Uh, so here we've got, uh, a pretty broad, uh, definition, but, uh, it's meant to provide, um, discretion, uh, to the person enforcing it, so, uh, as long as the lighting is not creating any distance. Uh, and then the lighting show up between eleven P M and seven A M, except for motion activated lights, it's all for security purposes. Um, we'll do it with a ten minute timer. Um, next, in six, uh, that section, uh, the section B was taken out of six fifteen six, uh, not deleted, just moved down to six fifteen seven, because it's a section that talks about penalties, so let's hook the penalties together in the penalties section. And those are, those are the changes in, in, in six, um, any questions about those?
Well, anything?
Yes, any questions?
Eight, six thirteen one eight, you know, I'm thinking of this maximum capacity. I think it was intended to, um, leave exceptions for children, but when it says plus four additional persons, um, that to me, you could have a two bedroom house with eight adults, that's what it sounds like to me. I, I, am I correct or not, according to my understanding?
Uh, that's, right, two bedrooms, uh, can have eight people, eight, eight adult, yes.
Yeah, but I mean, you say two persons for every bedroom, plus four additional persons, I don't think that, was that? I know you brought that up, Adam, was that your intent?
Yeah, because I think we wanted to allow people to use the living room. Some people that, that have, like, when you go to a hotel, you can have a couch, a pool, something to bed. And we're trying to accommodate for that, that possibility.
Or a family.
Right, or, or kids.
Well, I mean.
That, that are over two, because I mean, you, you could possibly, you know, like, I got from family sits.
Yeah.
Um, and, and we just look around. Sometimes on the floor.
Is that okay?
Well, I, I don't like it absolutely, it's, I'm not sure, I guess if they have, if they say they, I don't think we give it a turn. Details.
I mean, you want, you want that, erase thirty one, two additional persons, no additional person.
At least two is better, if I have zero additional persons, but I've compromised on two. Because I don't know if you want the people. I mean, the person who owns the Airbnb, I suppose I don't care, but I don't want all the other people in their house, in, in the house.
But Airbnb owner, restrict presence, and like, how many people could rent out?
I don't know.
The Airbnb host or owner couldn't restrict, like, one of people that are allowed in their.
Don't they?
In their house.
Yeah, but they.
For bedroom.
Right, you're saying maybe it's true in that.
They would, I mean, they.
I know.
But they may need as many.
But right, they would do that, but that doesn't mean the one who doesn't care to, to do whatever's, because it's.
Well, it won't matter if eight people are not, if they don't care, you know?
Well, it's kind of backwards to them, maybe, I, I don't think, that's what I think.
I think some of those consideration of kids too, like, if you're a family of mom and dad, grandma, grandpa, and.
I know, but that's different, and that's not indicated in here, that's my point. You're, you're just saying that it's okay for two bedroom place to have eight adults.
For people.
Well, I mean, yeah, I know, but.
Was it a six?
I don't know, you want eight, eighteen, twenty year olds coming into that home, that's the worst.
I don't know, there's always the exceptions, though, I mean, they're, we're a fishing community too, so you have people that are coming, and you have, like, dads. So you have eight people saying they're just a fish, and that part of the whole, that part of the fish, so, then you're, you know, depending on the circumstances, you could always have that player.
If you order, you have two little beds, and you have, you have, lots of sense to get, actually.
So any other questions for Andrew? Before we go to council panel vote or motion?
Well. There's also, I, I should point out, there's also, um, in, in checkered ten, uh, has, has its, its changes, love it. Uh, which, looks like that might not have made it in here, but.
Yeah.
Um, but it does need to be addition of the, uh, the, the addition of the, the, um, definition. Oh, yeah, we're on the definition, uh, short-term rentals added to, uh, that's in zoning. Uh, the harmful enjoying, as a conditional use, very not a conditional use, yes, a conditional use. It is, no, I'm not being a small temperature conditional use, sorry, section fourteen added, uh, at the end, it's just a, 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 a use. Permit use.
But they were not voting on tonight, correct? Because we're just voting it on the six, that's thirteen. Oh, it's currently standing or not?
Yeah.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
That's okay.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, so any other questions for Andrew? Yes, Ben?
I would just like to point out, one thing that we had talked about, and I think you guys should, um, actually suggest to you, you can do whatever you want, or we can talk about how many people to, like, sidewalk cafes and beer gardens and everything else as far as hours of time. Um, those actually stay ten to six A M, Sunday through Thursday, and between eleven and six, Friday and Saturday. I'll take that adjustment for those neighbors with short-term rentals, I'm sure you'll be pleased.
I think that's probably a good idea, especially from a enforcement standpoint, I just think it's just.
Where's that change?
That will be in the, in the, in the whole paragraph.
So what was the?
Again, that's nice as far as what you guys choose to do, but.
I think it's.
Sanificial, that it consisted of the, 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 that's something.
Yeah, I said, and maybe this, so what, you're leaving.
Sunday through Thursday, ten to six, and then Saturday, Sunday, eleven to six.
You currently have eleven, eleven P M to seven P M, you're up to two, that, you said.
I'm sorry, going up now where everybody is having some of that discussion, right, as far as weekdays and then, I especially would have consistent with our.
And then, and we go back to, although it's seven, that isn't weekends?
Well, it's seven to six on weekends, so it's consistent with everything.
You mean ten to six, right?
Eleven, eleven to six on weekends, ten to six, Sunday through Thursday.
Oh, okay.
That's what our sidewalk cafe or beer gardens, it's where all the stuff, all that is consistent with that across board. And the reason we did that was to take into consideration weekdays, school nights, things like that.
I do have a question about the lighting, um. No short-term rental show, I thought we were gonna, um, sorry, in the same section that we were just in. No short-term rental show allow any of the lighting, if you're, you're on the line, I hope everyone is your shield with lighting. I was sure to a rental show, allow any of her lighting, if you're the owner of the line, I hope everyone is shielded by it. For me, change.
You were, that's what we talked about uh at one point, and then at the next meeting, then changed. Uh so it changed the ground to was like that.
Do you count that or no?
No, I think it should like, I understand that it's a problem with lighting. And I understand that beer bottles are a problem, but to just tell everybody to come at eleven or ten just seems a little extreme. For any of her lighting, except for the motion activated lights, it's not for security purposes, ten minutes after activation. That's mainly concerned is just, it seems very restrictive. But I think I see it as a question.
Yeah, there's.
Well, didn't we, if someone addressed that concern or sense of all associated as many does not otherwise interfere with the court enjoyment of trees and property? When you were like, it's of these properties, according to standards, so in history, it's huge property. It's right.
I'm not sure. That's an exact sentence.
I think that's what we're trying to do in the law department, maybe like the behavior, because the trees and properties.
Right, we don't want the light custardy.
Doesn't matter.
Is that appropriate?
And if the first. If they need, or if they put gender, that the lighting would be uh cut off later.
Yeah, well, cut off, I can imagine. Cut off lighting?
That's the automatic.
Yeah, that's for the motion securities, uh like not just regular backyard, like if you're having a quiet conversation outside at eleven, that's not a cause for concern. It's not, you know, it's like your dust bowls are to the, or the money in the driveway. That's a lot of noise, or it is. If I'm having a quiet conversation in my backyard, you're not gonna come over and tell me it's eleven o'clock. It's quiet, right?
It's quiet, we're not getting called.
So what I'm saying is if it's quiet and I want my lights on, like to not have any lights on?
You can. Sure.
Yeah, I know, right, but like I just say, for a rental, it just seems really restrictive that any of her lighting, except the motion.
I think they've heard it to themselves, not all, but some have.
So Andrew, right in that last conversation was really that so be it, that in short terms, that more restricted. Rather than going all out. I just said, you know, set that's my, that's why I'm here. And again, it's not all, but it's it's some of them that I think it'll be less of the rest, even the lights on, you know, twenty four seven. And again, it's like that one to talk to. So if you you go to, just make sure your rental is home, that you can like say, hey, stop that.
Right, we talked about that, but just also, but it just like, it just seems really restrictive. That's all I'm saying.
Any other question? Yes, Tim.
And just so the public knows what full cutoff lighting is, that's a shielded light so that no light, which you wouldn't be able to see it from your yard, that it just shines directly down into the ground.
So if you're ten years ago, you put that in in the first sentence of all of that?
Well, the definition of what they have there says what full cutoff lighting is, but they don't say it will operate.
Wait, what you're saying, I think we gotta take it as as simple as possible, cut off. I don't like the idea of lights being in time, shining, maybe I want it to be just in the property of the light owner. What do we should do for the turn cutoff?
Well, the lawyer just said it was in there before, but at the last meeting, we got rid of that. Not all of those, maybe, but it came out they didn't want shielded lighting.
Correct. Yes, correct. You're right. Yes.
I'm not saying we should keep that.
No, no, yeah, I know, but you're you're right. When you said the lawyer had it in there and took out.
Yeah.
Or it wasn't on this end, and so. Although I thought we did talk about having that full cutoff lighting in front of the garage doors and the front door. Um we were a lot wrong there.
I would just say from a police perspective, that may be a little concerned with people not being able to have any lighting on property in general anywhere in the city. So that's just from a police perspective. I don't like, especially in the uh residents that's not being happy about it quite frequently. That we just allow that as possible, spotable, you know, for somebody to come in that into. Because we can have those big grandparents that are, I just bring that up from a security standpoint for any brother.
But I thought we did, like you said, I thought we did discuss that when we read the library. We're gonna allow for full cutoff lighting at the garages and at the front door.
Uh that was, I can certainly add that back in. Uh it it was described as uh security lighting, so that's why it's in here as as security lighting, but we can shift that to full cutoff.
I think they can still have the security lighting as well.
Yeah.
We can just add that in there ourselves. We can make a motion to do it here, and you can just add it in on the photo. I don't want this to come back again.
Right.
I'm sick of talking about it.
Thank you.
I fully agree. It just seems really restrictive.
Yeah, yeah. Yes, Mark.
I need the motion to add to cutoff lighting, certain change the hours, end to six, Sunday to thirty three, and eleven to six. By considering that in the second sentence.
Okay.
I would just add that cutoff lighting is on the front of the outset too, so that it's easily enforced.
Yeah. Yep.
So a definition of what cutoff lighting is, is a security manager and also security lighting with the the uh.
Andrew, you getting all that so you can add that in there? Or maybe I can shift it to you? Geez, it's.
I'm gonna need, I'm gonna need something um.
Okay, I'm adding this.
Okay.
I don't know, we'll make sure this is coming this time. Yeah.
I have a second part that adds uh.
Just a few more seconds. Make sure Matt has it off. No pressure.
That could be a rude bit, that's.
Definitely.
Even W one T, that could be the most. Way to do. I'm not writing on this anymore.
Yeah, we're good.
All right.
Okay. So we'll do a roll call.
Tim Petrie?
Aye.
Finalization of limits?
You're going for the east side?
Yes.
Scott Stockman?
Aye.
Adam Husky?
Aye.
Darla Player?
I'm.
Mark Whitner?
Aye.
Shannon Derby?
Aye.
Billy Player?
Aye.
Motion clear.
Okay, uh to E, ordinance amending chapter seven dash four of the municipal code entitled Trees and Trees. Is this you again, Andrew?
Yeah, you can see. That was, uh this this change is um basically the policy, you know, the city's more uh hard to feel to make the decision about whether to get involved in uh doing a tree uh uh removed or or do you remove, asking owners to remove it. Um there are some of these in here uh that are asked by, here's Mike. Um and I, in my perspective, I think one of the biggest pieces is just that, like giving the the city the discretion to act um rather than requiring us to act, and I'm just, you see, that's actually.
Do you have anything to add to that?
I don't have anything to add. Well, the question, we talked about this a lot, right, right?
Okay, so uh looking for a motion to rebring it up, the ordinance. Thank you, Shannon. Seconded by seconded by Tim. Any council discussion? And are there questions for Mike and Andrew?
This will again take us out of the business, right? So they're like, it's gonna take us out of the business of enforcement. All backers, it'll give us the more discretion about how we enforce the private trees. Instead of requiring us to do it, to give us more flexibility on it, figure how to do.
Yeah, yeah, so instead of requiring the city to step in at every instance.
Anything else? Okay, uh we'll roll call vote, Amanda.
I, Sharmalunis, uh Scott Stockman?
Aye.
Adam Husky?
Aye.
Darla Player?
I'm.
Mark Whitner?
Aye.
Shannon Derby?
Aye.
Billy Player?
Aye.
Tim Petrie?
Aye.
Okay, unto E, ordinance amending sections nine dash three dash four and nine dash six dash eight of the municipal code pertaining to abatement of nonchesque weeds, tall grass, and other public nu- nuance.
I can speak to that. You guys have a memo.
Yep.
Um really, where it was as far as uh nuisances, it was originally placed kind of odd in where it was as far as it shouldn't be more with those things that you have to pose for. So that's why we're just moving that uh that part of the chapter. Um nine, six, eight, then is amended just to add, designated where prior to that, there was words of city manager. Um somebody else taking effect, but in all cases, it's what can be a designated somebody, um which is our code enforcement officer. Uh and then really just providing the method of how you're going to provide notice so that it's consistent across the board. And that's the inspecting officer, where the designation shall provide notice by personally delivering the written notice to the owner, posting it at the last uh the the owner's last home address, or by delivering the written notice to their last home address. So that covers most major issues of the post, so there's more to it.
Thank you, Ben. Uh looking for motion then. Thank you. Well, seconded by Shannon. Any council discussion?
Is it clearly defined what nonchesque weed is? I mean, there's no.
By statute.
So that's defined by statute. No questions about?
Yeah, everything else is fine. We're just breaking this wording of the power, just really, really, honestly. Like I said, the city manager wasn't going on to inspect any things. The code enforcement officer, that's where designated comes in. Uh and then the other part, it just didn't make sense because you're reading one chapter and it's talking about property and basically legal issues as far as the law enforcement, but it didn't have anything to do with code enforcement. Obviously, it goes into the list where all the code enforcement is.
Anything else? See nothing else, this will be a roll call vote. Amanda.
Scott Stockman?
Aye.
Adam Husky?
Aye.
Darla Player?
I'm.
Mark Whitner?
Aye.
Shannon Derby?
Aye.
Billy Player?
Our Tim Petrie?
I'm.
Finalization of limits?
I'm.
Andrew of that, uh I'm too bad, finalized council member appointees to boards, commissions, and committees. Uh this is me. We did talk about this last week, but not everyone was, that are able to attend, so I just wanna kind of go through everything real quick, just to make sure we get Adam and Shannon and someone, and Mark wasn't there. Uh so advisory report, and we'll go real quick, Adam, so you still wanna be on advisory report? Yep, okay, uh and I'm on that. Does anyone else wanna be on advisory report? Okay, uh border review is Bill, Doug, and myself. Anyone else wanna do border review? Okay, uh that worry about uh B I D C. Shannon, you said you didn't want to do that, correct? So you're switching with Doug?
I would want to do it.
Okay, so Doug is going onto that, and I am on that one. Anyone else? Okay, uh wait, that one, committee on aging. Mark, you still like that one?
Okay.
Okay. Sounds good. Uh environmental board, Shannon, you're still on that? You want to stay there?
Yes.
Okay. Uh plan commission, Adam, I'm assuming you want to stay there?
Yes.
Okay. Uh let's see, I'm doing some of the easy ones. Terms Main Street. Darla, you said if there's any interest, you would be okay to step step away from it? Is that still okay? There's still.
Was any, was anybody else interested?
Yes, Connie would be interested.
Oh, okay. Um that that's fine with me this time.
Okay, so Darla.
Connie, you're gonna like it. Hey, let me ask you a question. Is this, I'm not gonna be on that. Can I go on the B I D C?
Um you could take my spot.
There's no room.
There's no room, but you can take my spot if you want.
No, I think you should be there.
Okay. Um you could take, you could kick Doug off. Doug wanted to be out, but you can take his, take his spot if you want.
There you go. I can kick you off. Why don't I kick you off?
You're gonna kick me off?
Yeah, I think you'll like it.
Uh so Darla, you're gonna do uh K I D C?
Correct.
Okay, Doug. Uh the other one was advisory report, advisory board. Uh Shannon?
Yes.
Uh Doug said maybe, Darla, you said you didn't want to anymore, correct?
I I will, it's it's me, it's me.
Okay.
You know, I'd like to see somebody else that that's too important, you know, that I wouldn't want to be there to help.
Gotcha. Does anyone else wanna do advisory, environmental advisory board? Okay, I will, so Shannon, I'll talk to Doug and see if he's still using it, maybe, Darla, so I'll let you know.
Okay.
Um Shannon, the last one was room tax commission. Uh credits Mark and Bill. You guys want to stay on it?
I'd like to, but who else wants to join?
Yes.
Yes, okay, I know Doug wanted to interest in it, I don't know how much his interest was. So I'll double check with him, but I think that's fine. And the buying for Main Street. Okay, that's it. I will make sure we get the list updated and then sent out to everyone. And I'll talk to Doug about advisory, uh environment, environmental advisory board. Okay? Okay.
Questions?
Okay, uh unto G, proclamation naming the week of May eleventh through the seventeenth, twenty twenty five as Police Week, and May fifteenth, twenty twenty five as Peace Officers Memorial Day. You'll need a motion to read and adopt the proclamation.
I make the motion to read and adopt the proclamation for Peace Week and Peace Officers Memorial Day.
Thank you, and seconded by?
I don't know.
Thank Connie. Any council discussion? Uh little voice vote, all favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye, anyone opposed? Motion carried. Joe Alliers.
Whereas the Congress and the President of the United States have designated May fifteenth as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the week in Wichita Falls as National Police Week. And whereas the members of the Two Rivers Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of Two Rivers. And whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency. And that members of our police department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence or disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak defense of oppression. And whereas the men and women of the Two Rivers Police Department unceasingly provide a reliable public service. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Two Rivers calls upon all citizens in all patriotic, civic, and educational orgs organizations to observe the week of May eleventh through the seventeenth, twenty twenty five as Police Week. And being further resolved, the City Council further calls upon all citizens of Two Rivers to observe May fifteenth, twenty twenty five as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of those law enforcement officers who through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community, or have become disabled in the performance of duty. And let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen officers.
Thank you, Ben. Appreciate that. Uh unto H, proclamation naming the week of May fourth through the tenth, twenty twenty five as National Travel and Touring Week. We will need a motion to read and adopt the proclamation. Thank you, Connie. Seconded by Mark. Uh we'll do a voice vote again. All favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye, anyone opposed? Motion carried. Joe Alliers.
Uh we're in the theme National Travel and Touring Week, twenty twenty five, highlights the industry's role in strengthening tourism by attracting visitors, supporting local businesses, enhancing the quality of life for residents. And whereas travel and tourism tourists produce significant considerations like monetary prosperity, providing employment, opportunities, driving investment, showcasing our unique culture and natural attractions. And whereas tourists recognize the importance of tourism and marketing efforts in promoting our destination to a mission across the nation and around the world. Ensuring continued economic benefits and Canadian rich potential. Whereas to honor the national professionals in the travel and hospitality industry for, uh, having such tirelessly. And provide exceptional experience for visitors, ensuring that vibrancy and success grow in our destination. And now, therefore, the City Council of the City of Two Rivers hereby claims the week of May fourth through the tenth, twenty twenty five as National Travel and Tourism.
Thank you, Joe, appreciate that as well. Uh, unto I, proclamation naming the week of May fourth through the tenth, twenty twenty five as drinking water.
Of course, always.
Yeah.
Tourism, uh, I think that you have a suggestion. Joe, maybe recap. For data, uh, there was a segment that he's gonna come and speak to us, because there's so much interesting information. And the information he's gonna present to us about numbers and figures, so maybe if the next city council, you could recap and report.
Yeah, I'll I'll provide a recap at the next city council meeting from the event that's taking place on May eighth, highlighting, uh, the items that. Data from Capital Wisconsin will be touching on that data specifically to our community.
Yes, thank you.
I'll give a motion to, um, read and adopt the proclamation, probably.
Thank you, yes, uh, any council discussion? Yes, Tim, ready? Uh, so now we'll do a voice vote, uh, all favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carry, all yours.
All right, this is proclamation naming the week of May tenth, uh, May fourth through the tenth, twenty twenty five as National Drinking Water. Whereas water falls, natural cycle from earth to air, perduge. Whereas water is the basic and essential need of all living things. Whereas our health, comfort, and standard, including, depend upon an abundant supply of safe drinking water. And whereas we recognize the significance, the Safe Water Drinking Act is the first national program. To establish regulations and standards of all public water suppliers in the United States. And whereas the ever changing standards for drinking water make better facilities and better trained personnel, et cetera. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Two Rivers hereby claims this week of May fourth through the tenth, twenty twenty five. As National Drinking Water Week, and the City of Two Rivers encourages all citizens to recognize the special contributions. Of the Two Rivers Water Department and the special efforts of the staff who work every day and has a well meaning for the citizens. Are gonna be a stick on drinking water? All right, fifty percent off.
All right, uh, twelve for information only.
Uh, City Council, regular meeting Monday, May nineteenth, twenty twenty five at six P M. City Council work session Tuesday, May twenty seventh, Friday at six P M, I'll play you that one.
Don't.
And it's just been a special meeting time, May twenty ninth and thirtieth, regarding.
Okay, and then there's no closed session?
I have a number.
Okay, uh, then looking for any contract to adjourn. Thank you, thank you, Tim. Will do a voice vote, all favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carry, thank you, and good night.
That's.